Welcome to City Council Meeting of Thursday, July 7. Please rise for invocation and pledge allegiance.
My Father in Heaven, we thank you for this great nation that you've given to us and you've entrusted into our care. We thank you for the obvious blessings that you've showered down on this place and this land. We thank you for the prosperity that we enjoy here. And we do pray that you would help us to use that prosperity for good. Help us to be wise about what we do with the freedoms that we enjoy here. We thank you for those who gave their lives that we might have this freedom. We thank you for this carefully crafted government that affords us a say in how we are governed. We thank you for the wisdom of our forefathers who appealed to you as the supreme judge of the world to form this nation. Lord, we do pray for our protection from harm, from terror, from corruption. We pray for our troops who are serving around the globe. We pray that you would protect them from harm. And we pray for our police and emergency personnel right here, that you would protect them as well as they serve and give their time and energy selflessly. We pray for the protection of our leaders, that you would give them wisdom and protect them as they serve in the different responsibilities and roles. And, Lord, we pray that you would give us now wisdom tonight as we execute the business of the city here. Give us unity and help us to be mindful of the great responsibility that is on our shoulders. Lord, we pray that you would bless this city and bless these citizens, and we ask all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is approval of City Council meeting minutes dated June 23, 2016. Can I have a motion and a second to approve those minutes?
No move.
Second. Hearing motion, second. Any comments or questions from members of council? Seeing none, Mrs. Frank.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and those minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda is limited courtesy of the floor. We've had no requests this evening for that, and so we'll move to the next item, which is appointments. And we have one appointment to the Williamsport Water and Sanitary Authority. Mr. Mayor, how are you?
Good evening, City Council, Dr. President, Mr. Vice President, members of City Council. Tonight, before you, we have an individual that I'd like to have for your concurrence to the Williamsport Municipal Water Authority. Her name is Cindy Richard. Cindy is smart, she's creative, she's a team player, and she will add diversity to this board. This will be the first time in decades that a woman will serve on the Williamsport Municipal Water Authority, and she will be a positive asset. Thank you.
Thank you. Could I have a motion and a second to approve that appointment?
No move.
Any comments or questions from members of council? Mrs. Smith.
I think now while we are confirming someone to be appointed to the Water Authority, I think we should tonight note the passing of a 40-year member of the Water Authority, Thomas Tuck Frazier. I had the pleasure of knowing Tom for quite a few years. Tom was a mechanical engineer. He was a co-founder of Plastivac Corporation, which then turned into the West Company. He had many, many patents in the plastic industry. Some of those patents are on display in the Smithsonian Institute. He had a brilliant mind. He was very thoughtful, creative, in bringing the Water Authority where it is today, with some of the lowest water rates in the state of Pennsylvania. Tuck Frazier is going to be very difficult, if not impossible, to replace. We certainly keep his family, his wife and children in our prayers today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Other comments or questions from members of council? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank on the appointment.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and that appointment is approved. Next item, I believe, by the way, Mrs. Richard, the City Clerk will be happy to have you get sworn in. I'm not sure that she's prepared to do that this evening, but if you don't mind just stopping by her office at your convenience and you'll be ready to go. So, welcome to service for the City of Williamsport. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, then, we're gonna, we have a number of guests here this evening as we always try to do. We want to help them get home a little earlier in case they don't want to stay for the full meeting, so we'll jump around a little bit. Next item, then, is going to be an ordinance designating Via Charles Sapola, M.D. Mrs. Frank, please.
An ordinance designated via Charles Sapola, M.D., being hereby ordained by the City Council of the City of Williamsport as follows. Section 1, the public street now designated as Academy Street between East 3rd Street and East 4th Street also be hereafter designated as Via Charles Sapola, M.D. Section 2, the proper city officials are hereby authorized and directed to make such designation upon the official map of the City of Williamsport. Section 3, this ordinance shall take effect 20 days after final enactment.
Thank you. Can I have a motion and a second to approve this ordinance in first reading?
Second.
With motion, second. Mr. Mayor, how are you?
I'm doing great. I just have a couple of comments I'd like to make, please. Dr. Charles Sapola was loved by his family, but most importantly, he was loved by his community. He was a very patient, kind doctor. He even made house calls. He deserves this honor. And at this time, I'd like to yield to another Dr. Sapola.
Thank you, Mayor.
President. Vice President and Council. I was originally scheduled not to be here. I was supposed to be out of town, but I changed. And what I did is I wrote up something for Donnie to read, but I'll read it here, and then I will introduce my family that's here. Dr. Sapola began his career as a nurse, a profession that allowed him to stay in the medical field while working his way through four years of college and then four years of medical school. After medical school, he trained two full years in general medicine. He then did two more years in pathology and subsequently three years in general surgery. After that, he spent a year in an oncology residency and finally finished off his training with an additional year in orthopedics. By the time Dr. Sapola adopted Williamsport as his permanent home, he was one of the most educated physicians in the state of Pennsylvania. Dr. Sapola was related by marriage to two of Williamsport's most civic-minded families. His father-in-law's dad, Dr. George Nutt, helped to establish the Lycoming County Medical Society. He also donated the land to establish Williamsport's first public hospital. His mother-in-law, Catherine Sterns, was the granddaughter of L.L. Sterns. In spite of his enviable educational background and family ties, he was known for his humble dealings with others, whether in the operating room or elsewhere. He was the people's doctor. He was very proud of his Italian heritage. Many of his patients came from his immediate neighborhood, Williamsport's Little Italy. Many times, he was paid with fresh vegetables and even jars of hot peppers. Behind his Academy Street home and office, he also had a garden, which featured his legendary fig tree, which still produce abundant fruit to this day. Dr. Sapola touched many lives in his 60 years in the medical profession. The additional street sign in front of his old office may help to remind those who passed by of his respectful, kind and gentle touch. And I'll have to add here, I really, truly believe that they will see the sign, they'll remember the office, and it will bring back memories. In my office, I mean, with the business that I do, the practice I have, I see a lot of older people, so I see a lot of his older patients. Not a week, maybe even a day goes by that I don't get a Sapola story. They'll show me the scar on their hand or their arm, or they'll talk about how he made the early morning visit for a ruptured appendix to save somebody's life. So there are a lot of stories. I want to do just one more. It's one that's stuck with me all these years, and it may have been something that influenced my father to recommend that I go into dental school. It was an early morning call, 2:30 in the morning, that my father got a call. Of course, all his patients had his home phone number. They could call any time of the day. This was kind of a different time. But anyways, it was a 2:30 call in the morning. The patient was in excruciating pain. As it turned out, it was a toothache. And so my dad politely said, "Well, if, you know, if you have this real bad toothache, why did you call me? Why didn't you call your dentist?" And the patient replied, "Well, you think that's okay? It's 2:30 in the morning." So that, that just kind of relates to how he was. He was, and I'm sure he laughed about it, and of course, he told me the story later on. What I'd like to do is introduce my family who's here. My sister Gina, her husband Ernie, my brother John, four of my father's grandkids, my daughter Emily, my daughter Angela, and Gina and Ernie's kids, Aaron and Joey. Now, John and Ernie, John and Gina don't live in town, but we won't hold that against them, but they're, they're very proud of their father, and they also think this is a great thing. So I appreciate your consideration, and if it happens, it's great. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Dr. Sapola. Comments or questions from members of council? Mr. Noviello.
Earlier on, when Dr. Sapola didn't expect to be here, he had asked me to, in his stead, reflect those thoughts that he just now presented to us. But in the process, I also wanted to add a few thoughts of my own, being that I had a connection to his family myself. Certainly in the days of my youth, Dr. Sapola provided, you know, a great many services to my family. And specifically, at one particular time, when my father was in a rather crucial situation, Dr. Sapola surgically operated on him and most certainly saved his life. My family has been grateful for that ever since, and impossible to return, you know, that kind of a, of an experience to someone. But I also, in my own experience, spent some time in the doctor's office because I would make a number of unannounced visits, as I'm sure a lot of other people did in those days as well, but I was particularly a thorn, I think, in some way. He gave me many physicals for work and sports and what have you, and a number of other ailments that came my way in those days. He never once failed to accommodate my just walking into the door, always very gracious and very generous in the way he treated me, and always very professional at all times. But as I was going to mention earlier, it didn't preclude him from chastising me if I didn't follow his directions, and he was particularly adamant about my following my own common sense at times, when I probably wasn't following it as well as I should have. And I think he probably made that kind of a call a number of times, particularly to his younger clients, and I sort of likened it to him being something of a surrogate parent in those days, which maybe wasn't quite as uncommon as it might seem to be today, but in my mind, he certainly played that role for me on a number of occasions. So I think that this dedication and designation is fitting and right, and certainly, Academy Street is the only street upon which we could do this and make it right to begin with. So I appreciate that, and thank you, Mayor, for presenting this to us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Mr. Allison.
Members of, some members of my family also went to Dr. Sapola, my grandmother and one of my aunts, and I remember at times driving them there, and it just reminds me in the stories that you told, Tony, of, I think this area was blessed with physicians who were giving and who especially reached the underserved segments of our community and those who weren't able to, you know, access the things that money can give you and everything. And it just speaks to the, the problems we have in healthcare today that were solvable back then because of men like that and women who were willing to give, not that anybody in the medical system isn't today, but so much has changed, it's so much more complicated. But there was a time when somehow it worked, but a lot of things worked back then that don't seem to be working well now, but we're certainly grateful for, for your father and what he gave to the community.
Other comments or questions from members of council? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank on the ordinance and first reading.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and that ordinance is approved in first reading.
Thank you.
And of course, that will come back in two weeks as ordinance is due. Absolutely. Next item on the agenda, we're going to move down to number 20, resolution for Susquehanna-Greenway River Town designation.
Resolution supporting the designation of the City of Williamsport as a Susquehanna-Greenway River Town. Whereas the City of Williamsport has responsibilities for planning and implementing projects that promote and develop safe and walkable communities, bike trails, community parks, river access points, recreation facilities, conservation of open space, protection of water resources, historic preservations, and the creations of sustainable economic development.
Can you skip down to the hereby resolved?
Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Williamsport desires formal designation by the Susquehanna-Greenway Partnership as a Susquehanna-Greenway River Town.
Thank you. Can I have a motion and a second on that resolution?
No move.
Second.
Mr. Grado.
Good evening, President Williamson, members of council. This resolution designates the city as a Susquehanna-Greenway River Town. It's part of the Susquehanna-Greenway Partnership program. Council, Jerry Walls was here last council meeting. He regrets he cannot be here today. He's up on another river, I guess, north of us here. But there are representatives of the Greenway Partnership in the audience today. The River Town program also is kind of connected to the next item on the agenda, which is with the Susquehanna-Greenway Partnership under the Civic Engagement Program. Does provide for program grant opportunities for the city. We, and also provides as an economic boost for the city. Some of the requirements for this, and council, as part of the, as you know, part of the presentation, would be to pass the ordinance, form a River Town team, identify community leaders to be part of those candidates, provide an inventory to the Susquehanna-Greenway Partnership on some of the planning documents, and then complete and prepare the River Town application. There are a number of years that we can participate in this and conduct activities, but there is no cost to the city other than our effort at this point. So with that, I know, since this was presented last week to council, it was also presented to the Public Works Committee as the resolution on Tuesday.
Thank you very much. Mr. Smith from Public Works.
It was about a month ago that Jerry came in and gave us a very good description on what the River Town designation means to the city, and I don't want to go over what John has already said, but in terms of economic development and planning for the future, we think that this is going to be very, very beneficial to, to our area in general, not only with Williamsport, but in other communities up and down the river. Our area is known for recreation, and I think that this will go right along with our programs that are utilized for recreation. It did come to the committee on Tuesday, and we voted to send it to full council with a positive recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions from members of council? Mr. Henderson.
I grew up playing a lot at my grandparents' house, which is right on the river, and we did a lot of swimming, and we did a lot of fishing and boating and all of those things down the river. And recently, I read a, a letter to the editor in the paper, and it was decrying the loss of the pools, and one of the comments was that, "What are we gonna, what, what do we do? I mean, the kids might have to swim in the river." And I thought, wow, I don't know how I survived, you know? I think it's an asset, and it's, it's who we are, and, and I think part of our difficulties perhaps is, is a lack of access to the river. This will help in that way. I don't think that this makes us a River Town. We are one. We just recognize that, and so certainly, it will help us, it will be a benefit to us economically, but I think even the, the very heart of this is to our benefit, and so I'm, I'm very excited to be a part of this. Thank you.
Ms. Noviello.
Just very quick, no need to reiterate what everybody's already said. I do think that the River Town designation is, as Mr. Henderson says, a, just a recognition of what we've always been. The river certainly ties into Williamsport history and Lycoming County history to a larger extent as well, so this is another further recognition of that history. It will allow us to further the knowledge of that history more than we've been able to do up to now, and that in itself tying into the East Gateway Project, which may find some strong connections there in time to come, I think bears out all the, all the things that we're hearing here tonight and puts us in a good place to begin to create a future and that we, that we want for ourselves. With the help of all those involved, particularly the Greenway people, you know, I'm happy to see this come forward.
And I agree, you know, there was a time in, in this city's history and probably in many cities' history in which rivers were not valued for anything beyond, you know, maybe transportation, but definitely industrial use and waste disposal. While that was going on, we built a needed levee and we built some needed roads, but it disconnected us from who we actually are, and so it's, it's neat to be, it's exciting to live in this age in which we're reconnecting to those, that history and that identity. Some of those things that we threw up in the meantime are challenges that we now have to overcome, but this is one more step. You know, Riverwalk was a step. There are going to be many other steps for reconnect to our, our heritage and our, our history and, and our identity as a community and as a River Town, so I'm excited about this next step. Any other comments or questions, Ms. Mealy?
And let's remember that as a River Town, we're also a town of creeks and many waterways as are most towns in Pennsylvania, so it's important to think that while we can't necessarily access the river with as much ease as we could perhaps during the lumber era, we, we certainly have access to, to any number of waterways within our community. And it's important, as, as much of the wording in this document says, that we work to preserve access, appreciate the, the natural asset, and improve where we can, both access, water quality. These things lend an incredible quality of life to our community, and we ignore them at our peril.
Absolutely. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank on the resolution, please.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and that resolution is approved. Next item on the agenda is resolution for Susquehanna-Greenway Partnership Agreement related to civic engagement. Mrs. Frank, in short form, please.
Resolution to approve a contract between the City of Williamsport and Susquehanna-Greenway Partnership for professional services for a civic engagement project.
Can I have a motion and a second to approve this resolution?
No move.
Hearing, hearing a motion and a second. Mr. Grado, anything further to add for this?
No, other, other than this is part of a match, a subrecipient agreement with Susquehanna-Greenway Partnership as part of the peer grant we were able to obtain from the State Department of Community Conservation Natural Resources. It's being used as the match to the 25,000 Pennsylvania Humanities Grant that the Susquehanna-Greenway Partnership had received under the Heart of, Heart and, the Heart of Williamsport, which is what it's been termed, and these are, as you, as you know, are part of the civic engagement process, is telling stories. Alice Trobridge is really the lead for that. That's ongoing now, and you'll be hearing a lot, there's a website, and people have an opportunity to really find what they like about Williamsport and what they, what they value and what they would like to see changed. So it really is giving people an opportunity to kind of guide their livelihood throughout the next 10 years. Kind of works well with the update on our comprehensive plan. It really is going to be all part of that. This River Town designation is also connected to that, so that's all.
Thank you.
This was not reviewed by finance, I guess, at this point.
Public Works.
No, there was no, we, we weren't able to have a finance committee.
Oh, it was scheduled for finance.
So it was scheduled for finance.
And so, comments or questions then for members of council? Ms. Mealy.
No questions exactly. The, the grant, so to speak, has come and gone, but the, I'm not sure if anyone else has interacted much with the Heart of Williamsport program, but it, it certainly is an interesting, it's just been a really neat experience, I think, so far, and the information that they're collecting will be of value to us moving forward, John said. Right, especially in connection with a number of other things that are happening in the community right now, and both Susquehanna-Greenway and perhaps the Heart of Williamsport project, I think, may also be able to help quite a bit with a lot of our municipal storm water. Perhaps not, not help financially in any particular way, but merely in terms of rethinking the way that we approach storm water and perhaps reconceptualizing our relationship to all the kinds of water we deal with in the community, so.
Thank you. Other comments or questions?
The comment on the 10% city match, it's, of that $1,000, only 100 is actually coming from the city, $500 from Penn Strategies, and $400 from the Arts Alliance, and it's also mentioned that the City, Lycoming College, Lycoming County, and there's other participants giving an in-kind match. So again, you know, we see the kind of public and private and nonprofit group cooperation that really is the way to build things and get things done in this day and age, so we're glad to see that as well.
Absolutely. Other comments or questions? Mrs. Frank on the resolution, please.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and that resolution is also approved. Let me make a note that in the resolution related to the River Town designation, one of the things that the city was asked to do, and, and Mr. Walls asked us two weeks ago when he made the presentation, was to appoint two members of council to participate in the River Town, I forget the exact terminology, committee process for the city revitalization team, I believe it is. And so council's discussed it, and tonight, I'm, I'm pleased to appoint Mr. Noviello and Mr. Henderson to represent council on that team, and so, Mr. Grado, if you would communicate that officially, and we can do it informally to you as well this evening, that they will keep us informed and represent us in that organization.
Great.
Thank you. Thank you. So I believe, Mr. Grado, the next item that you had representatives for was related to the MS4?
Well, yeah, Kalen isn't here, so we can, Habitat for Humanity does have a representative.
Oh, okay, great. So we'll go ahead and move to the resolution related to the CHODO Habitat for Humanity Agreement. Mrs. Frank, please. In short form.
Resolution of the City Council of the City of Williamsport authorizing execution of a CHODO agreement between the City of Williamsport and Greater Lake Homing Habitat for Humanity in the amount of $30,000, $30,614.55.
Thank you. Can I have a motion in a second on this resolution?
Second.
Hearing motion in a second. Mr. Grado?
Yes, this is a, well, it's kind of a standard agreement for home funds to Habitat for Humanity, which is, CHODO is our community development housing organization that we provide 15% of our home funds for housing assistance. This project is 1607 Memorial Avenue. That's the house as part of the Broadart Development, the single-family home. We're providing $30,614 as part of that project to cover the subsidy for that, and also covers 10% developer's fee for the use of those funds, similar to what we've done with LND C. Habitat has done a number of projects with the city. The last one was on Diamond Street. They've completed that one. Ivy Way down on Charles Street, they have four housing units there. And this one is one of two lots that is being developed under the Broadart Neighborhood Project. The budget's identified on page 42, which shows most of our funds would be for construction. This does have, the Habitat will carry the first mortgage, 0% over 30 years, and we're in a second position with our funds. Arian Moser's here. She's the program director from Habitat, and she's representing Tina McDowell, who's the executive director. This is, we do have the 2015 home funds, which have been budgeted for this project.
And this was another item scheduled for review by Finance, which the meeting was not able to be held this week. So I'll open it up for comments or questions from members of council. Hearing none. Mrs. Frank on the resolution, please.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and that resolution is approved. While you're standing there, we might as well go ahead and do the next one.
I could do the next one.
The next item on the agenda then is resolution for a second amendment to an MOA between the Lake Homing County and MS4 participants. Mrs. Frank.
A resolution amending the agreement between the County of Lake Homing and MS4 Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System participants, whereas the City of Williamsport by Resolution 8365 dated July 10, 2014, partnered with the County of Lake Homing and the MS4 participants to meet the requirements of the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection mandates under the Municipal Separate Storm Water System Program. And whereas the participants now wish to amend this agreement to provide for additional conditions, now therefore it would be hereby resolved that the City Council of the City of Williamsport authorizes the mayor and city controller to execute the attached memorandum of agreement amendment.
Thank you. Can I have a motion in a second on this resolution?
Second.
Mr. Grado?
Yes, this amendment, as part of the MS4 program and the coalition, we have 10 municipal members, or nine and then plus Penn College. And it was determined that as we get more involved in this, and there are some additional members that are probably going to be coming on based on DCNR's new regulations, or DEP's new regulations, that the amendment would provide for two-thirds vote to get a positive recommendation to approve amendments to the bylaws that we have and the agreement that we have. And it also provides for withdrawal options. So that's all identified on Exhibit A. It's being presented to all of the different municipal governing bodies for their approval, but it was recommended by the members on the MS4 coalition. So this is basically just some additional kind of housekeeping amendments to this as we are getting more involved in the regulatory requirements of the MS4 program. And, you know, the coalition is a good organization that we get together and kind of can meet as a group those needs, as well as it's an economy of scale. So when we do, any cost that we have to budget is kind of borne by the 10 municipal bodies, so we're paying one-tenth the cost. Kalen Cozer was present at the Public Works meeting. She's our new MS4 coordinator. She's really doing a great job for us. We just put our annual report in, which is rather large. It's, you know, it's, for 10 of those that have to go in at the same time to DEP, it's quite a task. So we are meeting those requirements, but the regulations are going to get more stringent, especially on the next permit. They go in five-year cycles. 2018 is the end of this second, what the NPDES permit for stormwater. So we're preparing for that. And at that point, based on the MS4, the Stormwater Summit that we had this year at Penn College, we had a representative from DEP at the Harrisburg office. They did indicate that there are, that there are going to be requirements to show that we are reducing the sediment going into the receiving rivers, which is where ours is Susquehanna or Doherty's Run, and there are different ones. So we're preparing for that. So it is gonna, it's gonna get more strict, not less, and we're just preparing for that. And this is part of that process, so.
And this was reviewed by Public Works? Mr. Smith?
Correct. It came to Public Works on Tuesday of this week. And actually, what this resolution is, as John pointed out, it's a process for amending the agreement, and also details the withdrawal option. And the rationale behind that, as John pointed out, there are more and more municipalities coming in into the group, which when we have obviously more groups involved, more people in the groups, there are chances that at some point, a municipality may want to withdraw from the group, and this will state what the consequences would be after certain commitments of finances have been made. That's basically what the agreement amendment states. And as John pointed out, many municipalities are involved in this, and the more we hear about this each month, the more complex that this is going to be. So it's really going to create a lot of work for the city, and obviously, we're working with the Williamsport Municipal Sanitary Authority in implementing the MS4 program. If we had to do this by ourself, the burden would be enormous, and the cost factor involved in hiring staff and so forth, whereby we have this coordinator that is being paid for by all the municipalities. It's broken, broken into the number of municipalities involved, nine plus Penn College, which obviously makes it a lot easier for us. And that person actually met with us on Tuesday, as John pointed out, and she is very detailed and very much involved and knowledgeable of the requirements and so forth. So I think we're on the right track there in meeting the obligations that we have to. And we did vote to send this to full council with a positive recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Mr. Allison?
Mr. Grado, I don't have any questions on the amendment, but just, and not, I don't want to get into too much detail, but you mentioned they're gonna up the, or we have to hit a new standard for reducing sediment. Is that measured against some baseline, or is that year against year?
Well, I mean, I think that's, they're still working on determining what the baseline is or how you arrive at the baseline. Basically, what was indicated to us was it was, we're gonna have to show about a 10% reduction over the cost of the permit cycle of silt, which is nitrogen, phosphorus, and they've, it's kind of like what the sanitary treatment plant provides, so floatables that are going into the river from a point source, basically, is what it is. So somehow, we are, for example, if you're looking at street sweeping, we use that as a minimum control measure, and we have to identify how often we do it. Now, we may have to, and most likely, because that's how they measure it, is weigh the sweeper dumps that are coming in and showing how we're disposing of it to ensure that it's not getting into the river. So we're gonna have to calculate that. Cleaning our catch basins, for example, we would almost have to weigh the material that's coming out. And I'm kind of going through some of these processes, that it's not just the Chesapeake Bay. This is being done nationwide. Some of the larger cities are doing this, and it's just kind of getting into the smaller cities in what they, in determining a means to calculate a reduction that you are going to be required to do, in addition to the other ones, the illicit discharges, the regulation of reviewing stormwater management plans for land developments and construction sites for soil and erosion control, so. But we're gonna have to measure how much reduction we're getting, and that'll be inspected either by EPA or DEP, so.
And just briefly, at some point in these kinds of processes, you reach, yeah, a level that you really can't reduce it anymore, because there's no such thing as a completely pure system. Have they discussed that at all? What their target is?
They haven't indicated what the target is. I guess I'm just kind of indicating that based on, we're gonna have to measure at some point what that is and how we're gonna obtain that.
So at this point...
And then report it annually. Basically, that's what we're doing. I mean, we do report that we have a street sweeping program, we have an inlet cleaning program, but we really don't measure a baseline and then show a reduction, so. Which could all get wiped out in a major storm of two inches in 20 minutes, you know? Like we had.
Yeah.
But I think ultimately, and it's kind of like the Susquehanna-Greenway, I mean, we're looking at water quality.
Right.
You're also creating rain gardens, for example, so you're trying to control that sediment upstream, so every one we build becomes part of that. And then we continue to have to show that we're maintaining and inspecting those systems as they're being installed. So you're trying to control that sediment, and with the sediment, basically, is also the contaminants from the street system where they're being identified. And you do need to target the highest levels at first and try to contain those, but then you're also gonna have to show that you're maintaining that. And keep, and record-keeping is most important, which is probably the most tedious part, because as you're going through the system, keeping the records of that, documenting the data that you're collecting and maintaining that, that's all an effort that we're gonna be, have to bear. And there's a cost related to that, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Ms. Noviello?
Just very quickly, to me, this is a great example of the juxtaposition of complexity and simple mightiness at the same time here. So we're stuck in the middle of this and required to do so. Luckily, I think we have some great people involved that will get us through this, and we'll find ourselves in good stead down the line. But it is a unique scenario, if nothing else, I guess. Thank you, Mr. President.
Ms. Mealy?
I think when we talk about a target, Randy, part of the issue is it is a moving target in a number of ways, right? I mean, increasing technology makes it more possible to control your, to control and to change the way that your stormwater flows, permeable pavements, things that just didn't exist 40 years ago. And I think that those things will continue to come on the market and hopefully get cheaper as we move forward. Not in the aggregate, Jonathan, but I mean individually. We know they are gonna get cheaper in the aggregate. But there are, as we really briefly talked about at the Economic Revitalization Committee meeting on Tuesday, there are communities that are handling stormwater exceptionally well, and I'm assuming that both as, with the MS4 group and with, in fact, I think you said the MS4 group just took a trip to Lancaster, John?
Yeah, they, I mean, they've been kind of at, they're in the, you know, we were in Phase Two, they were Phase One, so they're in advance of us. But Lancaster is really at, and they came to our summit, the director of the Lancaster program. But they have a lot of instances, permeable basketball courts. I mean, it was, they went through the whole thing. They even had Brandon Park in Lancaster that had a number of stormwater management controls incorporated in their park system. So, I mean, it can be done, and it is an educational thing and a public involvement plan, so you're really trying to change the attitudes of people, that you're not just dumping anything you want into this catch basin. You're also trying to control the flow, and that also controls flooding. Everybody does it upstream of where the problems are. Graffiti's wouldn't run, wouldn't be a problem if everybody upstream...
That would be nice, yeah.
You know, managed it. So I think it is a mindset that we have to change and educate, as well as documenting how we're doing that, so that we can tell EPA, because this all, ours did come from the Chesapeake Bay issues that all of the states, including Pennsylvania, need to address.
Right.
I mean, that's an interesting point, John. I think when we talk about sort of regulations that get handed to us, it is important for us to remember that downstream from us, there's another graffy's run somewhere. And so all the time that we spend lamenting the fact that there's not adequate stormwater management above graffy's run that prevents our citizens from getting a bunch of water in their basements, presumably, there's somebody downstream saying, you know? So it's, you know, that's, it's a community-wide and a global lesson, I think, that we're slowly learning that, you know, everything that we do is impacting everybody else, and it bears thought, I suppose. The other thing to note, Randy, not that there's much we can do about this, but, you know, a lot of what's generating, not a lot, but a substantial share of stormwater issues come from farming activities, industrial activities in a community. Those are much harder origin points to control, but there is education that can happen there as well. And I think eventually, perhaps, that some of the stormwater management agendas will shift from communities that are doing quite a bit to control stormwater within their communities, and hopefully, we can move out and try to control some of that as well. But in the meantime, I hear Lancaster's brilliant, and so perhaps we should try to look to them for what we're doing here, but.
Great.
Mr. Smith?
We did discuss some of these issues at length on Tuesday, and Randy, what you brought up was one of the things that we did discuss. And it's very disheartening to hear that our sanitary authority has spent $120 million in debt, and other cities downriver have spent millions and millions of dollars. And the Chesapeake Bay Coalition is very disappointed because this is nowhere near the results they wanted. So they are back at it again, stating, well, we're gonna have to go back to the drawing board and see what's going on and why it didn't work, and how many more millions of dollars we're gonna have to spend, because they're not, they're not happy with the reduction. But we've stated this before, and my numbers, without actually looking at them, I know I'm gonna be very close, 70% of this pollution comes from forests. 20% comes from farms, and 10% actually comes, no, it's 20% from the... 20% comes from farms, and 10% actually comes, no, it's 20% from the cities and 10% from the farms. So 70% of this comes from forests. Now, you tell me how we're gonna control 70% of that from forests. And the other thing that we talked about the other day is, a week ago this past Tuesday, this city had two and a half inches of rain in less than five minutes. If you want to go up and look at the hill streets, you will find that McAdam has been washed out from the middle of the streets, and guess where it landed? In the storm sewer, catch basins, that's where it wound up. So as time goes on, this is gonna have to be filtered out, and yeah, we can do all these things with rain gardens and all this other type of thing, which are good, but you're not gonna stop that water coming down that street and ripping up the asphalt, and we're gonna have to find a way to collect that. Because if we don't, that's gonna be sediment, and it will be measured, and then obviously, we're gonna either find, or we're gonna have to find a way to clean that up. We can't control two and a half inches of water in just a few minutes. And we know that's been a problem with graffyous run. We know that manholes are lifted up 18 inches, 24 inches, because the storm sewers are not designed to take two and a half inches of water in that short period of time. So what's gonna happen next? We're gonna have to dig up all of our storm sewers and replace them with larger diameter piping, which is gonna cost millions and millions and millions of dollars. So I guess what I'm trying to say is, as we go forward with all these projects, we're looking at a lot of money, whether it's gonna come from our own coffers, part of it, state, federal, I don't know, but it's very disheartening to hear that $120 million has been spent and the Chesapeake Bay people are not happy. And that's just on our part. I mean, there's other cities that have spent millions also. I mean, it's not like they're coming back on us, it's just that with the entire process, they're not satisfied. So I guess what it means is, we're just gonna have to keep at this, and where the money will come from, I'm not totally sure. We'll have to figure that out as we go. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Ms. Mealy?
It seems as though, in a lot of ways, this generation, which I guess is a pretty broad generation sitting up here, has, we do a lot of cleanup, that is to say, whether it's pensions, whether it's, there are a lot of unfunded elements that are coming down to us through the years, ways in which we simply, you know, either developed or spent willy-nilly in the past, and somebody eventually has to foot the bill. I don't know what that means for us in the long run, Skip, but it's the same phenomenon we see everywhere, and in many cases, we have done it to ourselves. It doesn't mean I know how to fix it, but there it is. Let's not do it to the future, I guess, if we can avoid it.
I think that is a good lesson. The economists call these things externalities of, what is it, that you do something because it makes sense for you at a given moment in time to, you know, build your storm sewers or build your roads, or, you know, the things that we did because it made sense from an economic development standpoint, as a community, as a state, a Commonwealth, a nation, as a, as a humanity, and didn't factor in its impacts on others, and in this case, on grandchildren. We're all the grandchildren, and the great-grandchildren, et cetera, and we've started figuring out what all that means, and trying to unwind it when we can, when we know to do it, but being able to afford to do it all at once is just about impossible, and I think the example, I don't know that I would have thought about it necessarily, connecting the issue of pensions and other retirement benefits that we're committed to in the past to stormwater, but you're exactly right, that's exact, those are the exact same things. And I'm not saying that we have figured out how to be the absolute most responsible body that is possible, but we're trying hard to figure out how to be as responsible as possible, and that's incredibly difficult when all the bills for these things are due at once. So if there are no other comments or questions, Ms. Frank on the resolution.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and the resolution carries. Next item on the agenda, Ms. Nar, do you have representative? Okay, let me go ahead and jump down to number 25, a land development plan?
Good evening, President Williamson and members of City Council. What I present to you tonight is a lot consolidation and land development request from KNS Apartments LLC. It is located at 926 Washington Boulevard. It is in the CC zoning district. The plan is to consolidate the two lots into one lot, and at that time, they're going to construct a 28,000-square-foot storage facility, which was approved by the zoning hearing board. It did go before Lake County Planning, as well as our planning, with both positive recommendations for approval.
Thank you. Can I have a motion in a second to approve the land development and lot consolidation?
So moved.
Second.
Comments or questions from members of council, Mr. Smith?
Mr. Nar, can you identify the owners of KNS Apartments? Names known?
KJ Singh.
Pardon me?
KJ Singh owns KNS Apartments.
Okay, so it's one owner?
Correct.
Oh, thank you.
Other comments, questions? Ms. Mealy?
Just a quick question about storage facilities in general. I feel as though we've probably seen five of them in the last year or so. Obviously, it's an increasing trend in the city. Is that a nationwide thing?
Well, a lot, what you're running into is, because we're a large college town, the students don't want to have to take their stuff in between, back and forth. It's an easier way for them to store it here, while they go home over break and stuff like that. So, and the other thing, too, is, a lot of your families are downsizing, with downsizing, it's a way to store equipment.
I don't imagine it's the sort of thing where we would overbuild or anything like that, but I'm just, it's just interesting to me, because I don't recall seeing these until a year or so ago, and now it just seems like they're, every time something like this comes up, it's a new storage unit. I certainly hope for success for it.
All right, other comments? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank?
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and that land development plan is approved. Next, Mr. Girardi, are you set for yours? We have a couple certificates of appropriateness. First one being at 102 West Fourth Street.
Yes, good evening, President Williamson and members of council. What you have before you is a certificate of appropriateness request to erect one sign. Sign is to be a wall-mounted type. It's two foot, four inches tall by four foot wide. I did attach a drawing. Oh, I am very, 102 West Fourth Street, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'm all right then. I did the right one, I'm sorry. Attached, you'll see what the sign looks like. It's I Wouldn't News and WBRE, and the next, very last sheet, you should see where it's gonna be located. There's already a sign from Lake County Visitor Information Center on Pine Street, it'll be the next pier down. And we do have a representative here, if you have any questions of them or myself.
Thank you. A motion in a second to approve this certificate of appropriateness?
Second.
Hearing motion in a second, comments or questions? Do you happen to know if they'll be removing the one, the interior, the sign that's on the inside of the window?
That I do not. I think they will, though, at that time, but I will find out for you.
Okay, I'm just curious, because otherwise, I think it's basically the same information.
Yeah, a lot of times, the individuals like to put a sign up there, because until they come through the approval process, no one knows where they're located.
Sure, and they just moved in to the new building, and I think that the sign that's there was the sign that they moved over from their prior location, so. It would make sense. Other comments or questions? Ms. Mealy?
Just a quick question about the location, Joe. So it's the next pier down?
Yes.
Okay, got it. So it's more or less centered the way that the Visitors Bureau sign is, but on the next pier down. Not really any of our business, but that will give it enough visibility. It doesn't seem like a lot of street-side visibility that far down the street.
Right, and if you've been down in that street, and I have too, and I do agree, but I don't know where else you can put the sign, actually, it really fits perfect on the pier, the bottom.
Works for me.
Hearing no further comments, Ms. Frank on the certificate of appropriateness?
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and that certificate is approved. Next is a certificate of appropriateness for 26 West Fourth Street.
Yes, what you have before you is a appropriateness request to erect one sign. The sign will be a wall-mounted sign, it'll be 30 inches tall by 120 inches long, raised lettering on a framed background, and I have attached a photo of the sign and what it looks like. It'll be located above the two windows. If you do remember, this building came through an appropriateness before for some window locations and so forth. They aren't doing the KNP at this time, but they did want to do the signs, and that's the reason why they're back, and we do have a representative here.
Okay, so just to be clear, the two Xs are not part of how it will look, at least initially?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a motion in a second to approve this certificate?
So moved.
Second.
Comments or questions? Mr. Smith?
Joe, can you identify the owner of BNG Estate? Pardon me?
Dr. Gudinski.
Thank you.
He's the owner and also the physician there.
Other comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank?
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and that certificate is also approved. Next item on the agenda, we get to move back up, and I think the final one we have representatives here for will be number 19, resolution authorizing the execution of a lease agreement between the city and Lifland Skate Park, Inc. Mrs. Frank, please.
Resolution authorizing the execution of a lease agreement between the City of Williamsport and Lifland Skate Park Incorporated. Be it hereby resolved, if the City Council of the City of Williamsport authorizes the mayor and city controller to execute the attached lease agreement between the City of Williamsport and Lifland Skate Park for the use of the premises known as Lifland Skate Park at Memorial Park.
Can I have a motion in a second to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Hearing motion, second. Mr. Pavlock, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
The agreement before you is, outlines the duties and responsibilities for the city and for Lifland Skate Park in regards to the skate park at Memorial Park. Just to outline the main changes that were made from the prior agreement between both parties. The first change would be that the city's codes department will annually inspect the property, make sure that all the safety issues are in place. Also, at some point during the season, our safety committee, that reviews other properties that the city owns, and will go in there and make an inspection and recommendations for changes. Both parties will agree on a timeframe to make the necessary changes, if there are any, and then the Lifland Skate Park, as part of the agreement, will work on repairing the facility if necessary. Insurance was an issue, determining who would be responsible for the coverage. The administration has agreed that for a cost of up $2,000, $3,000, we would be able to incorporate that into the budget. We have found a policy that would cover the park for the upcoming year, which falls within those guidelines. If during the lease term, the policy would fall above that $3,000, it would be the responsibility of the skate park organization to pay any difference above the $3,000, which I believe they've agreed to also. And then another part of the agreement that we've added in is in regards to indemnification agreements, or certifications. We're requesting that Lifland, the Lifland organization maintains those agreements, keeps them on file, which the city can periodically review if desired for the park. The agreement and the insurance policy to be put in place has been reviewed by Jill Nagy, the city's insurance consultant. She is satisfied with the policy as presented to us and quoted to us, and she's reviewed the lease agreement and made minor changes that she felt necessary upon her review. This was reviewed by Public Works on Tuesday, and as you said, we have members of the Lifland Skate Park organization here, if there's any questions for them.
Thank you very much. Mr. Smith from Public Works?
Yes, this did come to Public Works on Tuesday, and this has kind of been a work-in-process for a few weeks. As Joe pointed out, there were some things that had to be resolved, such as the insurance, the liability, and there was some maintenance that was required on the park. That is the reason why it had been closed. As we understand now, most of those repairs have been completed. The insurance, as was pointed out, will come under our city plan, which will be less costly with the city than you going out and buying it directly. We need this skate park. Well, it's been closed, we found these skateboarders are all over town. And I think it was pointed out when we met with the skate park, that folks, that there was no one on council that certainly didn't want it, it was a case we just had to get a few things straightened away with insurance liability and so forth. The advantage that we have, and council did hire, is our insurance consultant, Jill Nagy, who is also an attorney. So she not only consults on insurance, but she's a capable attorney, which we get two for the price of one. And that obviously helps us with the liability part, and also in coming up with the insurance to meet the requirements. So we felt very comfortable with utilizing her and her expertise in coming up with the agreement, and as I understand it, Joe, you were also involved somewhat in writing this contract along with Jill. So we've got all the i's dotted and t's crossed, and I think we're ready to go as far as the Public Works Committee. We voted in the positive to send it to full council with a positive recommendation to move forward and hopefully get it open soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Other comments or questions from members of council? I just wanted to thank Mr. Pavlock and Mr. Nichols for working hard with Ms. Nagy to figure out what the insurance situation could be from our end, and working with the Lifland Group to make sure that this was a mutually acceptable agreement, so that, one, and, you know, I think, as a community that is committed to providing recreational opportunities as part of what we do, that we need to provide recreational opportunities that the citizens of our community want, and people who skateboard and BMX, as part of what they do, are citizens of our community, and so this is one of a number of things that we can offer, and in this case, it's really neat that we have a partnership between the city and a nonprofit organization that can figure out how to do it, one, in a way that's affordable to the organization, because the city can provide the insurance at a very low cost, because we're already insured for lots of other liability. But two, as Mr. Allison and I recently talked about, we aren't taking on the cost of another donated facility in terms of maintenance upkeep, as we did 30 or 40 years ago with a number of pools, and we've dealt with this quite a bit over the last few years, on what to do with that as they age and repairs need to be made. So I think it's mutually beneficial to both the organization, the city, and our citizens who love to see how much air that they can get on a daily basis, and so, thank you to all involved in figuring out how to get this moving forward and back in the right direction in a way that satisfies everyone's concerns and needs. The one question I guess I had is for Mr. Girardi. I know that work has been happening out there, Mr. Pavlock showed me a few pictures. Have you been able, have you been able to do the inspections? Is it time to do the inspection? Is it, how far are we out, once this passes, from being able to have an open park?
Yeah, once this passes, Mr. Sillow is gonna go out tomorrow and take down the signs and take down the tape, they'll be able to operate their fences up, they took care of the cores on the block, they took care of, there's three areas where there was some wrought iron, or excuse me, rods that stuck up that he has patched and taken care of. The graffiti's removed off the one wall, I hope that they intend to paint the rest of that wall gray, would be nice. Yep, so I have no issues at all with them opening tomorrow morning.
That's great news.
Or tomorrow, when the park opens.
That's fantastic news. One thing I meant to say as well, that I like about this particular lease agreement, is that I know it's the intention of the organization at some point to expand the amenities of the park, and by structuring it in the way we do- the park, and by structuring it in the way we do, it will enable that to happen fairly easily when the timing is right for the organization. So if there are no other comments, and it looks like there are, Ms. Mealy.
I think the one interesting thing that perhaps will be exciting about the skate park, unlike the pools, is that an organization that continues to maintain it will also keep it up with the times, I think, in a way that did not happen with our pools. So we found that they found a disuse as they no longer serve the needs of the population that we were hoping they would serve, and so I'm, Mr. Wilcox in particular, who has his finger on the pulse of skateboarders and BMX riders everywhere, I think it's really exciting that this park will hopefully be able to keep up with the needs of skaters in a way that the city isn't always able to keep up with the needs of recreators in other areas, because it's sort of a public nonprofit partnership in a way. So thank you, both of you, very much for your dedication to this cause.
Other comments? Mr. Allison?
Yeah, I'd just like to add to that. I mean, there is a demonstrated need, as Mr. Smith pointed out, but I mean, the history we've had with the skate parks so far has really been good. I mean, there haven't been any problems, there haven't been any issues. It's been great, and so it's been a win-win situation. So commend you for putting that together and keeping your finger on the pulse, as it said. Thanks for that.
And I guess I would also add that having advocates for things that people care about in the city are important. Things, when people are silent about what they care about, those things move down the priority ladder, and so I think those of us on council who interact with neighborhoods and groups and all of that are always trying to encourage people to speak up and advocate for what they care about, and so here's a perfect example of that. The last couple of comments have been ideal in that regard.
And having advocates who come forward and meet us halfway with a solution, I think, is also a really important part of this. Both Sally and Lonnie deserve to be saluted for the fact that they saw a need, they came forward with funding and a proposal, and I think that's something that doesn't often happen in the city, and we were fortunate to have found that in this case. A group that saw a need, found some money, figured out a way that obviously it could be a partnership in the city, it needs to be financially involved in something, I think, on its own soil, but also the, they didn't, you know, to see the need is one thing, but to help provide a solution to it is a very impressive second thing and makes our lives much, much easier. So thank you.
Other comments? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank on the resolution.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and that resolution is approved. Go open the park in the morning.
I think they're okay at midnight.
Okay, so we appreciate everybody's diligence and positivity getting the time resolved so quickly. We look forward to expanding with our.
Great, thank.
Aye, aye, Lonnie.
Thank you very much. I believe we've emptied, almost emptied the room. Ms. Smith, do we have any agenda items that we need to deal with?
That we can do our dirty business in secret, is that the?
Yes, exactly. Our television cameras remain, and so we have many guests at this, in that regard. An amazing number, where are you? There you are. An amazing number of you always tell me about watching this incredible performance we give. If I'm following my own checkmarks here correctly, this takes us back up to number six, which is one of a series of ordinances to amend or close or transfer items related to our home budgets between two thousand five and two thousand fifteen. Our solicitor's out of the room, but two weeks ago, our solicitor allowed us to make a single motion to approve all of the ordinances in first reading, and so in the absence of a solicitor, I'm going to make the grand call to allow us to make one motion to approve ordinances in final reading, which would cover items six through sixteen on the agenda. Can I have a motion and a second to approve those ordinances in final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Thank goodness. Mr. Grady, do you have anything further to add on any or all of those items?
No, I don't. They were legally advertised between first and second in this reading.
Thank you. Any comments or questions on any or all of those ordinances in final reading? I have to give it a few minutes so you can think about each one separately.
Okay, we're done.
Okay.
Don't wait too long.
Mrs. Frank on the motion to approve all of those ordinances in final reading.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and all of those ordinances are approved in final reading unless the solicitor yells at us later. I wonder if we could do that within an entire agenda? Some nights, I'm in the mood for that. Not tonight, where I'm having fun. Next item on the agenda is, Mr. Nichols been waiting all night for this one, ordinance adopting a six-year capital budget in first reading, Mrs. Frank. If you'd like, we can put it off. Table it. Would we get a red forehead if we tabled it? Ms. Frank, in short form, please.
An ordinance adopting a six-year capital budget projects, a six-year capital, geez, capital budget projects for the City of Williamsport for fiscal years ending June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two.
And can you read the total for each section?
Seventy-eight million, eight hundred and fifty thousand, eighty-four, and that's total on the first page. Second page is seventy-eight million, eight hundred and fifty thousand, eighty-four.
Which, as I understand it, would be entirely funded by Bill Nichols and RBT. Can I have a, I have a motion and a second. With a motion and a second, Mr. Nichols. Getting pinker.
Good evening.
Pinker.
Okay, once again, this ordinance is in front of you to adopt the six-year capital projects budget, and as I've said many times before, it's a planning tool for the city with the first two years structured as sort of an action plan. This program document is one of three steps that we follow in implementing a capital project. This is the, you know, first step of the project or program. The second step is to budget a particular project as part of our annual budget in the capital projects budget, and the third step is the actual award of a contract if the funds are secured. And as noted in our administrative code, this is a living document and is subject to revisions by council at any particular time. It also satisfies our regulatory requirements as it relates to River Valley Transit and PennDOT's capital funding program. So this brings us to the ordinance before you, and there are four sections of the report. The first section is the status report for the current year, and as you note, that this gives you an update on current projects and whether they've been completed, rescheduled, or are in progress. And the second section then is the proposed capital projects budget, and this is by department for the six-year timeframe. The third section gives you more detail on what we are saying the potential funding sources are, and there's a code there lists about ten different opportunities for funding for these particular projects. And then the last section provides you with the project descriptions and justifications, and those have been provided by each department as part of their capital projects budget submission. Next Monday, the planning commission will review the program, provide a recommendation as it relates to this report, and then if necessary, the finance committee will have the opportunity to provide additional comments at its next meeting, and that will be scheduled before the second reading of the ordinance. As Jana stated, the total six-year capital program is approximately seventy-nine million dollars. However, once again, we're looking at the first two years as an action plan. Again, we're prioritizing those projects listed in the first two years as more likely to get possible funding and more likely to be implemented. So highlights of the first two years, and this is in section two of your report, so starting on page one, the first line end is a paving program, which is budgeted at approximately one million, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the first two years, and there also is a line end to show the continuation of the brick program, also continuation of the Pathway to Health Project, which I think is the last round of this effort, that's budgeted a million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in year two. Seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars is budgeted for work associated with storm sewers, pump stations, drainage structures, including improvements for Graffis Run. In the first two years, a million dollars is being programmed for potential levy improvements, and five hundred thousand dollars in first year has been identified as potential financing through the city. Hopefully, everything after that will be through partnership with the Water and Sanitary Authority. On page two, three hundred and thirty thousand dollars is budgeted for public services, equipment and facility roof replacement projects. Under recreation in year one, we have a million, three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars program for Bowman Field, which the administration proposing to use a RACB grant and implement phase two of the Bowman Field Revitalization Plan. There's a budget of seven hundred thousand dollars to upgrade city facilities, and it looks like the priority in this case is Brandon Park. On page three, the proposed Public Safety Department budget for the first two years shows that they are suggesting the purchase of three police cars each of the two years, the amount of three hundred and forty-four thousand, five hundred dollars, and the continuation of our city camera project and the amount of three hundred thousand dollars with proposed funding from the federal government. And then in year three, I might add, a budget is shown for the possibility of new public safety building. We're not showing this in the first two years because I think it's still on the drawing board or conceptual phase at this point in time. Under the codes department, twenty thousand is budgeted for vehicles and equipment, seventeen thousand dollars for upgrades to the GIS program. The fire department capital project budget includes a new pumper, but that's in year three. I think they've done a great job keeping the fleet up to date, and there's a new pumper soon to be arrived, which you'll hear about shortly. The first two years, two hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars for facility improvements as well as budgets for a supportive vehicle, breathing apparatus, air compressor, thirty thousand dollars is also budgeted for the upgrade of fire hydrants and laterals. And then on page four, under general government, there is what I consider one of the highest priorities that the city has at this point in time in terms of revitalization efforts, and that is four million, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the East Third Street Gateway Revitalization Project, and you know, with potential, with a partnership like coming college and seeking funding from the foundation and the possibility of securing multimodal funds for PennDOT, I think this top priority project will serve as a catalyst to do projects or start projects east of Market Street, just like we've been able to accomplish west of Market Street. So I really look forward to seeing that project happen. And then also under general government, funding for support equipment, MIS upgrades, network control systems, administrative building improvements are also programmed the first two years. Under transportation, River Valley Transit is replacing or programming four point nine million dollars for the purchase of a CNG replacing buses over the next two years, and you know, once that is accomplished, about eighty percent of our main fleet will be CNG, which is far faster than I ever expected. Also, one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the purchase of sport vehicles, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the purchase of spare components and sport equipment, and last, a million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for River Valley Transit's ongoing economic development downtown revitalization efforts. So the budget for the first two years of the overall program is approximately twenty-one million dollars, of which funding sources are primarily coming from federal, state, various grant sources, River Valley Transit, potentially up to a million dollars in local financing. Department heads are here tonight to answer any questions, and we look forward to your approval on first reading.
Thank you. I know this was scheduled for review by finance, and that was unfortunately not able to happen, and so finance, of course, will be able to do that in anticipation for second reading. But, so I'll just open it up to general questions and comments this evening for members of council.
Thank you.
I have a couple, fairly straightforward ones, I think. One of the things that a number of the items in here points to, especially back in the back, so for example, under, I believe it's, in the back, we have kind of the verbiage behind, the rationale behind various programs and requests and planning, and so there's one titled Technology Road Map, and that one, and there's some others, in fact, we just received a request to figure out how to do sort of an emergency equipment replacement from another department. A lot of people are looking at the Act thirteen funding as a possible source of funding, but one of the things we should note for ourselves as we're making these plans for capital investment is while, on the one hand, Act thirteen funds, which are the natural gas impact fee revenue, are, we've always thought that those should go toward capital funding opportunities rather than creating operating expenses, and we've more or less accomplished that over time, including the pumper that Mr. Nichols just referenced for the fire department. We should note that last year, we received six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This year, we budgeted, we knew that that number would be reduced, but we didn't know at the end of two thousand fifteen what that number would be. We budgeted five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. A couple of weeks ago, we learned that we would receive five hundred and one thousand dollars. So already in this year, we're going to have to find forty-nine thousand dollars worth of savings from what we had planned to expend in addition to the unexpected request that was recently made. But we also probably can expect another decrease next year. I'm going to guess at least another hundred thousand dollar decrease because simply, gas prices are still low, there hasn't been any recent drilling, and those are declining revenue based on the age of wells and how long they've been in place. So if next year, if this year, we had capital investment of five hundred thousand dollars, maybe next year, we're only, we'll be able to get three hundred and fifty or four hundred thousand dollars, and so that's going to be a source that will continue to decline, and we're going to have to become less reliant on it until gas development activity returns, which we expect to, but there'll be a delay between when it returns and when revenue goes back up. And so, you know, we should continue to look for steady federal funding sources, and I know the administration does a good job looking out for those. We have to be very careful, as council has been trying to work closely with the administration, being very careful about how far we extend ourselves in borrowing. I know those discussions are ongoing, and we'll probably see action in a couple of weeks related to some potential borrowing opportunities. But this is an ambitious plan, both in the out years, but also an ambitious plan in the next couple of years. I think we're all very much excited about the potential of what we might be able to do at Bowman Field if the RACB grant comes through, what we might be able to do in the East Third Street Gateway if we receive funding from the state and/or from the foundation related to that, amongst a number of other opportunities, those probably being the largest ones on our plate. But even the planning part of the document, and especially the out years, we're very much going to have to rely on some creative funding that does not do, circling back to what we were talking about earlier, that does not place an undue burden on future generations. Figuring out how to be responsible and finding a way to pay for what we commit to now is a big part of what we have to do, and so this is an ambitious plan, I think mostly a doable plan, especially in those first couple of years. But people need to realize it's a plan that's going to have to be adjusted based on the fiscal realities that we face and our need to be as responsible to the future as we possibly can. So just throw that out there for chewing on, I guess. Other comments or questions? Ms. Mealy.
Glad you made that point. You always do, and I thought he's going to do much more justice to it than if I weighed into that. But yes, this is a cross between. But yes, this is a cross between a planning document and a wish list, as we all know. And several of these items, if we're fortunate, will be fleshed out over the next few years. But there's by no means any guarantee, especially when we see our favorite letters, U N D. Which means undetermined.
Something Nichols Wallet.
But on that note, actually, Mr. Nichols, just a quick point on page two of the very first section of this, the status report on current projects. There is still a U N D next to the computer equipment line item for the police department. And I believe that's coming from the general fund at this point, correct?
Correct.
So, just, I was a little surprised to find that for something that had not been postponed this year. But, yeah, we do have a source for those funds that we are currently expending. And a couple of quick questions on the, on section two here, if, as long as I'm not stepping on anyone's toes. Mr. Grado, what's our, everywhere I look in this document, obviously, there are references to CDBG funding, which, as we know, decreases pretty much annually at this point. To what extent do we actively have the CDBG funding that we're proposing to utilize next year in the capital?
We really don't have any other, I mean, we've done it with storm sewer separation as part of street projects that are in local areas, but that's general locations. Under the levy improvements, we really don't, it would only be in kind of smaller projects that are ineligible low-income areas. They're not really designed for high priority projects or the higher cost projects. So, basically, that's it. I think one area, I know we've had a discussion with the fire department, the fire headquarters is an opportunity to try to fund some of those activities. The, it is eligible for ADA accessibility, for example, at City Hall, if we get involved in that. But it's just the, and that can be anywhere in the city for any public facility projects, Bowman Field, if that's part of this.
Problem is, there's only so much money.
But it isn't going to be much.
Right. So, but in terms of where it's promised for next fiscal year, we anticipate actually having funding for the projects to which it's promised for the next fiscal year. Okay. And then, we'll see what the government hands us.
We have been getting a decrease allocation, although slightly, in CDBG, probably more in home funds. So, we're trying to supplement that with the fare, which is the Act 13 money that the PHFA gets to the county, and that goes into housing programs. So, we're trying to supplement ours. We're using that in the rental rehab program now, too.
May I take? I think certainly that department and City Hall has been exceptionally resourceful with funding. It's not a commentary on the department at all, it's just that every, you know, we have limited fiscal resources, and that particular area is becoming more and more limited. So, it simply pops up a lot in this document. So, just checking. Mr. Nichols, as far as Bowman Field spending goes, I know we do allocate $25,000 a year, $25 bucks a year in the general fund budget. We don't have any anticipated additional funding once we complete this round of redevelopment and capital assistance funding and borrowing that we're putting into Bowman Field this year and next?
No, we don't have anything identified. This really represents, if you remember how we structured the lease, the new lease with the crosscutters, that this year's project and hopefully next year, the RACB project, gives us that four-year extension. And so, there are some other items that we've identified in terms of long-range projects. So, we're going to keep pursuing funding wherever we can, obviously, but but with what's identified here, we're accomplishing what we need to meet the four-year extension.
I know that we talked about further projects there, but I wasn't sure.
Well, expanded offices, yeah, I mean, there's, you could spend a million dollars a year, there's easily, there's no question about that. So, it's always going to be a work in progress. I mean, it's an important asset to the community, and so, we just got to keep working on ways to fund what we need to do.
Moving on to, I notice a video surveillance system budgeted in the police department for next year for a federal grant. Do we have any, I mean,
I'm not sure.
I'm assuming the application's been filed and some.
I know that they keep pursuing that, and there seems to be a positive attitude about securing some additional funds to do that, expand it. I mean, I feel it's been successful, so I identified it as an action item in the next two, in the first two years of the program, so that's why it's there.
Yeah, just seeing as how it was slated in next year's budget, I was wondering exactly to what extent we knew that we were going to be receiving the funding, but it sounds like it's still up in the air.
I can't, I can't, I can't say a hundred percent it's going to happen, but it is a priority, and so, we are pursuing it.
Yeah, along with that question, if I could.
Sure, absolutely, please, Randy.
Just to tie in, whatever plan there is for the, you know, those cameras or whatever, we could have everything at once.
Yeah, well, absolutely, Randy's, Randy's right, that I think if if we're moving forward with an expansion of the surveillance camera system, then certainly, while we know that Mr., while we know that Skip will lead the way in terms of, you know, greater in-depth exploration of the use of the grant and the locations and all that, it probably wouldn't hurt if the rest of council were kept abreast as we're moving forward with that, just so that we're not kind of blindsided by it. Was that sort of your point? Yeah. I wholeheartedly concur. Any, I'm happy to move forward, but if anyone else has further commentary brought on by anything I've said so far, please jump in. Okay, then, just a few other questions. The $150,000 of undetermined funding for building access control systems on page four of proposed capital projects, Mr. Nichols? I'm assuming that is not part and parcel of the security upgrades to the police department that we've been discussing?
No. Well, a lot of access controls, the front, securing the front of the building, and handicap accessibility, I'm not sure how that's listed. This tried to mirror the IT person's recommendation. He provides you all, I think it's in the booklet, this plan, which is pretty comprehensive, so he tried to memorialize, you know, all those different items in this capital program. So, I, I'm not an expert on this stuff, so I can't really address much of it, other than what's he's, you know, written in his narrative.
My one suggestion with some of those projects might be that if we're considering a new public safety structure, and we're putting that two years out as a possibility, I would really be hesitant to take on spending within City Hall that wasn't sort of calculated to accommodate for the possibility of a new public safety structure in the movement of the police department. So, understanding, of course, that the funding is undetermined, so even though it's listed next year, the likelihood of it happening is probably relatively slim. I would personally, and it looks like I speak for at least several members of council when I say that, I would be cautious about spending a lot of money when we don't know exactly what direction we're moving in with.
Well, I agree. And if we were going to pursue any of these, then you would see that in next year's budget. So, hopefully, by then, some sort of guidance or direction has been fashioned to, you know, tell us what we're doing, you know. So, it's there just to be positioned if we're going to consider any of it for next year.
Understood. We'll consider my guidance then put forward. But, and of course, I'm sure everybody else will have plenty in the next little bit. Last question, Mr. Nichols. Exactly what streetscape are we doing to the tune of half a million bucks every year for the next five years?
Well, that's my vision of trying to keep the streetscape program going, whether it be western market, eastern market, you know, throughout the CBD. Certainly, that represents not a minimal investment, but to me, a worthwhile project to put together, bid, and go through the process of doing such a project. So, if it's in the East Third Street, if it's into, you know, wherever, and the $500,000 is what, for the first year, is what we suggested in the financing plan. So, as far as the out years, I can't really identify, other than we are going to keep charging ahead to try to secure money for streetscape. Because I'd like to see that a priority each year, you know.
And I agree, I think the better the face the city presents to its citizens in terms of the look of our streets, the shade on our streets, all of those things, the better off we are as a community and the happier we all are to live here. One observation I would make is, and I know we did discuss this briefly in the ERC committee meeting, this council and no council that I've sat on in the past few years has ever authorized borrowing for things like streetscape or paving. And I would just like to mention that sort of moving forward, looking at this expenditure over the course of several years, that personally, I, while I salute the beautification of the community, I don't, once again, want to do it as something that might rest on the backs of my kids. So, or, I'll just my back ten years from now.
No, I agree 100 percent. That's only if we can secure grants. It's not necessarily just for the downtown. One year, we did Millionaires Row. You know, Newbury Elm Street. And now, with Act 89 and multimodal funds, you just read about a couple of projects that were approved, Indian Park and some others. So, there's opportunities, I think, for little projects of this size each year, if we're able to secure the funding to do them. And have a strategic plan in place, we're lucky enough to get the money. So, I agree, this is not appropriate for borrowing money.
Fantastic. And then, the only other thing I would say about that is, once again, in the ERC meeting, we had some discussions about, well, stormwater, BNP's, things of that nature. And I think we need to be as proactive as we can be about incorporating those into our streetscape plans because obviously, those dollars then don't only do us good in the very particular causes of streetscape, but they do us good in terms of potentially saving us money on stormwater down the road and all sorts of areas. But I know that you're well aware of that, Mr. Nichols. I just make the point again in a public forum because I think it's important that the public understand that we're, in some ways, spending every dollar three times in the city, trying to get the most that we can for the limited amount of funding that we have. And the more that we can take those dollars and use them to go toward multiple sort of causes, the wiser we're being with our citizens' money and frankly, the taxpaying money of people across the nation that comes to us in grant form. That's everything for now.
Thank you very much. Other comments or questions? Mr. Smith?
I just have a couple of quick comments in regards to the City Hall, we have two projects actually going right now that we're working on the Public Works Committee. We discussed these the other day, that's why we did not leave the meeting until almost 3:30 on Tuesday. We've got a lot of projects, and Bill and Joe were both there. We had a good discussion on some of these things. When we talk about relocating City Hall, there is a lot of work that we have to do in determining whether that's going to be worthwhile or not, what the cost is going to be, what the future costs are going to be. And when we look at renovating here, what those costs are going to be versus locating to another area. But in locating to another area, there's a lot of things we have to look at. We have to look at the parking situation. We have to look at rent, what that's going to be in future years. So, there's a lot of work that has got to be done. We're also going to be meeting this month. Probably, these chairs will be completely full with those stakeholders in a proposed public safety building. We've got to start throwing out ideas in a work session to find out what we're going to need from each of the departments. Fire department's going to be requiring a lot because of the storage facilities that under Pima. There's a lot of equipment, expensive equipment that we're storing currently and very difficult to get to at this point if we needed it. So, we've got a lot of projects ahead of us, and no, we don't know what the costs are going to be, but that's what we've got to determine, and we've got to do our due diligence. And it's going to take a lot of hours and a lot of meetings. And sometimes people think that things are going slowly, but you have to realize that seven of us don't work 40 hours a week here. And we're doing the best that we can do. And when we're under the number of projects that we have looking at, and it's all for the good of the city, none of this is something that won't benefit the city, whether it be from the levy project, or are we going to spend the money on this building, or are we going to relocate to another building? We know we need a public safety building. We've thrown out some really nice ideas about, and we're already working on how we could get different grants for a green building. But there's a lot that has to be done, and believe me, we're trying to get as much grant money and other money as we can. We don't want to burden our taxpayers and our future generations with more and more and more borrowing, as we discussed here tonight. And we are going to have people that are looking into grants of various types so that we can do this as reasonable as possible and perhaps make a showpiece of that building, especially if we can do it in the green nature, which I'm 100 percent for. We think we can get some grants for that part of it. So, yeah, we've got a lot of work cut out for us, and Bill, you know, you said that timeline of the amount of years involved in the public safety building, and you're correct. I mean, if we were working on 40 hours on just that project, it would go a whole lot faster, but we can't do that. We don't have the personnel to do that. So, I think that your timeframe that you spoke about is adequate. And we want to do this once. We don't want to go into this and make huge mistakes and spend money and find we should have done it another way. And that's why I say, when we're talking about this building, I expect these chairs to be completely full with the players that are involved, so that we can get everyone's input in how we're going to go about doing this. So, we've got, as was pointed out, this is a wish list and a desirable list, and many of these things are doable in here, but it isn't going to happen overnight. So, we are working on it, we're working on these projects diligently, and we'll report back to you as we, as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. I wanted to add a couple of comments related to what Mr. Smith was just talking about, related to a potential public safety building and potential options for City Hall. You know, when we do talk about these things, and we've already, I mean, we're just scratching the surface, and we've already had a bunch of meetings that council has thinking about these issues. But it's easy to forget that the public hasn't been at those meetings, even, you know, many of them are public meetings. And so, just wanted to provide some context just for a second for the big picture on those two issues. The challenge that we face right now as a city, as it connects to City Hall and public safety, is on the one hand, we have some old buildings that are, money wasn't set aside in past years to maintain and update and keep up with the changing times, et cetera. And so, City Hall is a fantastic building that will always be protected as long as I'm around and almost everybody else, I think, in the world. But it's a building that meets different ages' needs, both from general government and from public safety. We're going to need to, this isn't an option, this is, at some point, you simply have to reinvest in old buildings, as many of us who own old houses know. And this building needs a lot of money poured into it to make it, to keep it where it is and make it usable for the future. Facing that and facing the prospect of how to fund that, the city council and the administration, and for that matter, county commissioners, had had a few discussions about, maybe. about, maybe we should time out, take a timeout for just a few months, to think about very deliberately, instead of just moving with momentum, about whether we should go down that path, make this building meet our needs, or go down a different path. And going down a different path could be a lot of different directions. Can't emphasize enough, not a single decision has been made. I don't even know if we've asked the right questions yet.
No, we don't have.
We haven't. We've only started to think about what the questions that need to be asked are, much less answered. Zero decisions have been made. But one path is, invest in this building, it's gonna need to happen if we do that. Also, we need to invest in Fire Headquarters to a greater degree than we have. We need to invest in Rikerd Avenue, where many of our emergency facilities are. We need to invest in a lot of different facilities in the coming years, because they don't meet our needs, and because they're getting older, and you have to do that with old buildings. So the timeout is to say, are there more cost-effective paths to follow? I don't know if there are, but we have to start with that question. And one path that we're exploring right now would be a combination of a public safety building that would meet not only all of the needs of our police and our fire and our codes department, but also maybe in partnership with the county government in their needs for public safety, as it relates to maybe something related to coroner's office, or central booking, amongst other facilities. At the same time, then, you know, general government outside, for the city of Williamsport, outside police and fire and codes, generally, public safety, is pretty limited in terms of the space needs. City Council doesn't need a room this big most days. Mayor and his administration and his staff, whether it's community economic development or finance, et cetera, doesn't need the rest of the building. For that matter, Controller's Office and Treasurer's Office, we just can't fill this building up, especially if public safety moves out. And so, if we're able to find the grant funding that Mr. Smith was talking about, and can find a solution that meets needs, actually provides better services than we do now, then we might want to go down a different path for general government, space needs. That would be a lower cost, that would not necessarily have 25-foot ceilings that you have to cool and eat, et cetera. That would be more cost-effective, if it is. Those are just questions we're asking. We don't know what the needs are of all the departments. I think that's the meeting that Mr. Smith is referring to. We don't know, the finance department's focusing on the needs of the general government part outside public safety. We don't know what resources, we do, but we need to put together all of the resources that we're expending on those facilities, all the capital needs that we have in the next few years for all of the facilities if we don't change course. And so, basically, what cards do we have to play if we change direction in some other way? And then we've got to go find out if we want to change directions, is there funding available? I'm assuming, Mr. Nichols, that the $12 million you have for public safety is a placeholder number. None of us have any estimate on what that might cost, what we might be able to leverage in terms of our own dollars, what grant funding we might be able to get, whether it's public safety or green funding, what the money the county, if they participate in it, might be able to bring to the table. All of those are questions that we're exploring. And so, you know, for a lot of the other things we're talking about, this is absolutely a planning document, but the numbers for the things connected to public safety building, and for either staying in this building for the upgrades it needs, or changing directions for general government, those are simply placeholder numbers while we're figuring out what the right questions are, and then finding out what the answers to those questions are. And so I don't want the public to think that they have not been informed about a direction that has already been decided upon, because I know I haven't decided on, because I haven't even thought of all the questions that we need to ask. We've started asking ourselves those first sets of questions, and about a month or two ago, we sort of divided up the workload a little bit to figure out a path forward, and this will be a long process of planning, with many points of decision-making to be made. And so I wanted to throw that out there on top of the very good comments that Mr. Smith and others have made tonight about those agenda items in the capital budget. So, thank you. Are there others that would like to comment? Hearing none. Mrs. Frank on the ordinance in first reading.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and that ordinance is approved in first reading.
Thank you. Thank you for all your input.
Absolutely. I believe, oh, Deputy Chief Dimick, I didn't want to miss you, I was running down my checks. Next item on the agenda, then, is resolution for a memorandum of understanding between the city and Brynleye Fire Apparatus Mount, Mountain Fire Apparatus, thank you. Deputy Chief Dimick, how are you this evening?
Good evening. President Williamson, Vice President Allison, members of the City Council. What you have before you is a resolution requesting your approval to enter into an agreement with Brynleye Mountain Fire Apparatus. Brynleye Mountain is a nationally-known used fire truck broker who will assist us with advertising our 1993 fire engine that is being placed up for sale due to the arrival of our new engine sometime around August. There are no upfront costs with this service, unless the unit sells through them, at which time they will receive a 10% commission fee. This was brought before public safety on July 5th and was approved to move to the full body of council.
Thank you very much. Mr. Smith, public safety.
Yes, this was brought to us, and we had a very good description of how this is going to be done. And one of the things that we were concerned about is, if we turn this over to Brynleye Company to take care of this, what happens if all of a sudden, we get a bid on this from, let's say, a nearby borough and want to buy it? And the question was, do we have to pay Brynleye Commission? And the answer to that is, no, we don't have to pay them if we are able to sell that. They're going to obviously try to get the most dollars for us. However, should we sell it on our own, we're not going to be penalized for that, which is unlike many real estate contracts, where you sell it yourself, that's okay, but the real estate agent's still gonna get their commission. I've gone through that and passed with certain commercial buildings. So we did agree that this was probably the way to go in selling this vehicle and attempting to obtain the most dollars for it. So we did vote with a positive recommendation to full council for approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or questions from members of council? I'd just add, it does seem like a good path forward. I got really excited there for a second when I looked at the commissions, because they say, hey, if it sells for less than $100,000, they get this, if it sells for more than $150,000, they get that. And I was like, well, that's gonna be a good payment. And then I remember discussions we had in the past that it's not likely to sell for those kind of price ranges, but, you know, you can hope. And it's amazing what you can get a good deal on a fire truck for if, you know, say, Joe has always wanted a fire truck to drive around, his very own fire truck to drive around. Pretty good price on it, I think. So we could save that little bit, a 10% commission, I think, if Joe wants to buy it tonight.
We'll take 10% off of it for him.
If there are no other comments or questions, Ms. Frank on the resolution, please.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and that resolution is approved. Thank you for your patience this evening. I believe, tell me if I'm wrong, that Brynleye's just to accept for filing. Can I motion a second to accept hard minutes of April 2016 and public work minutes of April 28, 2016?
Someone. Second.
Hearing motion and second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. Ms. Frank?
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and those are accepted. Next item on the agenda is announcements. We, I need to announce that there will be an executive session immediately following this council meeting on the purpose of litigation. The next regularly scheduled City Council meeting will be held Thursday, July 21st at 7:30 in City Hall Council chambers. Other upcoming meetings include on Monday, July 11th, at noon, the Planning Commission, at 4:00 p.m., the Recreation Commission, on Wednesday, July 13th, at 3:30, the ONE Pension Board meeting, on Monday, July 18th, at 9:00 a.m., the Historic Preservation, Tuesday, July 19th, at 10:00 a.m., Blighted Property, 12:00 p.m., Public Works, 3:30 p.m., Finance. Come and stay all day. And on Thursday, July 21st, I think one of our guests will be excited to attend the 10:30 meeting of the Zoning Hearing Board. We also, that day, have the 4:00 p.m. Board of Health meeting. That brings us to the end of our regularly scheduled meeting. Do I have comments or questions from members of, comments from members of council? Mr. Smith?
I have a couple of things that I'd like to address, and I'll try to do them as rapidly as possible. Mr. Sillow, do you know if the $50,000 in the budget for the Brick Streets this year is going to be spent on Brick Streets? What has been done this year?
Well, I can address, we did the section of concrete, and a lot of it was spent on the concrete sills adjacent to the Brick Street, there at Harris Place in Hepburn Street, we did work there. There was work done at Graffia Street there at Hepburn to improve that approach. So they do, a lot of it's the brick, but it's also the concrete sill. And the other section was finishing up First Street from Walnut Street East. So that's where the brick work was done.
So the $50,000 has been spent for this year?
Yes, it has been spent.
Okay.
Yeah, the contract isn't, well, actually, the contract is complete now. We haven't made the full payout.
Right.
Because the Brandon Park work.
Okay. The second thing, while we were naming streets tonight, when we discussed this the other day at Public Works, I thought to myself, you know, Bill Nichols has been here so long, maybe we should name a street after him, and then I discovered we already have a street named after Nichols Place, and it's right across the street from the Transportation Museum.
Can I address that, because I looked into that? And...
You wanted to name them all after him.
No, no, no. Nichols Place was named after a parthonitary many years ago, I think around the turn of the century. Again, I'm looking into this, but it was, he was, it was O.W. Nichols or something, but he was a parthonitarian, was named after that civil servant who seemed to be, was recognized for whatever purpose.
So we have to find another street to name after you, correct?
Well, you could just say William Nichols Place, I don't know.
All right, we'll work on that later.
But seriously, that was an interesting question, so, actually, my historian in the family, my father, was able to get that information.
Isn't that a coincidence? It's right across from the Transportation Museum.
I know that is, but I thought it was a horse thief in town that was...
The last thing I want to address, and I was hoping the mayor perhaps would be here. For many, many years, City Council appointed members to the Williamsport Municipal Water Authority and Sanitary Authority, and we were told a few years back that we can no longer do that, that's now up to the mayor. However, those folks that are to be appointed have to come to this committee for approval. I can remember in years past, and some of you were on council, when Mrs. Whaley was president of council, and we took applications for that position. And then we thoroughly vetted those candidates. We found out what their opinions were, we had several questions, we asked them. If you recall back, that was done in an executive session under personnel, but there were some folks that were rejected because of certain ideas that we felt were maybe over the limit of how to be workable on the authority. I had asked, the last time that we had appointed someone, that the next appointment, that we would be permitted to look at those applicants and also be involved, because not only are they being nominated by the administration, but we have to approve them. This is very much like Washington, where a cabinet position or another position has to go to the Senate. A good example is the Supreme Court justices. The Senate holds hearings on those nominees. And I guess I'm a little disappointed that I did not have a resume, I don't think any of us did, on the candidate that we approved tonight. We were not given the chance to ask questions, and I'm not at all implying that that person is not qualified. I'm not doing that. But I think in view of the fact that I had asked the administration previously to provide us with resumes, that we could look over of candidates and perhaps enter into a discussion, because we do have the final, the final vote on if that person is to be confirmed or not to that particular organization, or if it's in recreation or whatever. This is a very important position in the Water and Sanitary Authority. There's a lot of projects going on, very expensive projects, and I guess that I would ask, Mr. Nichols, maybe you could convey that to the mayor, that I was under the impression that the next one that we were going to have, we would be able to enter into that discussion. And I would certainly hope that that would occur in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments?
Mr. Allison?
When we approved that individual, and again, I'm not specifically talking about that person, I had thoughts about what Skip just explained, and put, well put, Skip, because there was a generation of people, and you mentioned Tuck Frazier and Mr. Nichols Senior, that had vision and foresight to create a water system that, it's a blessing to us in this area, that we have a pure water system, it's sustainable. They laid the groundwork for all of that, and I think to add to what you're saying, Skip, we need to ensure that there's people that buy into that, first of all. You know, the day-to-day operations of the Water Authority, and people have their differences and, you know, would like to see this changed or that tweaked, but the foundational principles that that system was built on, we need to, you know, insist that the integrity of that be maintained and kept as an authority in this area, that's just my opinion. But, you know, that's, to dovetail on what you said, I think, you know, that's why I would like to see that, so that we would have an opportunity to engage in those kinds of conversations. So thanks for bringing that up.
Ms. Mealy?
And mealy, because I think that it is important that all of council voice their agreement with Mr. Smith and Mr. Allison on this, I would like to say to both of you, well put. I think everyone is aware that in a council meeting is not an appropriate time to ask questions of an appointee to an office, especially when it has been announced via the media prior to it coming before City Council. And it would be, I believe, in the best interest of the Water Authority, the city as a whole, and certainly the City Council and the mayor, to permit counsel an opportunity, especially in a position of this magnitude, on a board of this magnitude, to meet the candidate, read a resume, ask questions about the candidate's goals for the authority. It is a mayoral appointment, but it is also a council... It is a mayoral appointment, but it is also a council approval, and we all need to do our due diligence, and we cannot do that adequately in a forum like this, in a public forum, at the last minute.
I'm going to just compare with all those comments and just add the fact that, I don't know, maybe I'm the only one that didn't know if there were any other potential candidates who may have been in line or been seeking the position. We weren't informed if those people were given any consideration, and again, with the lack of resumes, we wouldn't have known that on the outset. So, again, just to reinforce all the comments made, I think that it's something that should be given some consideration as we go forward.
Yeah, let me just say that accountability is an important, and probably you could make the argument, the most important aspect of our form of government. And so that, you know, that just underlines all of that, that we need to have some type of accountability. We get into trouble when we have appointees that are not held accountable in any way. And so that's, that's something we need to really be serious about. I agree.
And I'd just add that I agree a little bit of my perspective on it. It was brought up, the parallel to Supreme Court nominee. You know, council, I hope, never becomes so polarized as to be able to not take action as we often see Congress doing, and I don't think that at all would be our intention. You know, for a long time, council has approved every appointee that the mayor has, but it maybe has become a bit too routine, especially on critically important positions. We've almost always gotten resumes, and so that gives us at least contact information and at least some perspective. And so at the very minimum, we should insist on that. But in some cases, in particular something like a water and sewer authority appointment, I think, being given the opportunity to have the kind of private meetings, to be able to ask those questions in the executive session, where, as Ms. Mealy said, it would be much more appropriate than in a public forum, where, you know, unlike the kind of hearings that you might have for a Supreme Court justice before the Judiciary Committee of the senate, we're all neighbors. We have to see each other tomorrow, and we saw each other yesterday in our neighborhoods and our grocery stores. And so while a senator of one party might be more than willing to embarrass a nominee of a president of a different party, that's not who we are as a community. And so having the opportunity to sit down in an appropriate kind of executive session or work session or something along those lines, and bounce ideas off each other and see how people think on some of these incredibly important roles, I think that I agree with my colleagues that that's entirely appropriate. I'd also say that maybe in our thinking through this tonight, that one lesson we might learn is, if we're not afforded that opportunity, there's nothing that would prevent us from kind of making the point, hey, we can table this. Worst-case scenario, we could, well, in the next scenario, we could, you know, ask those questions, even though the forum's not quite the rightful one. Worst-case scenario, we can say no. I don't think any of those things are things that we want to do. And I think in the end, 99% of all appointments made by the mayor are likely to be approved, as they always have been for not only this mayor, but prior mayors. But I think that accountability word is the right one. We should not simply rubber stamp. We do play an important role in that regard. So thank you to all of you for those comments. Other comments from members of council? Ms. Mealy?
A question, actually, if I may, to our legal counsel. Mr. Lubin? Norm? Quick question for you. If council were to decide to table an appointment pending the ability to review that appointment in executive session or something along those lines, however it might fall out, there isn't some sort of automatic approval process or anything like that that would be triggered, correct?
No.
Okay. So that appointment could be tabled indefinitely if not, I'd really prefer to ask that question now, rather than if we decide, ever decide to table an appointment right then. Okay. All right, excellent. So that is something that we could put it on, put it on the table and leave it there until we'd had an adequate time to review the appointment.
We can do that personally, yeah.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments on anything else, members of council?
Just briefly.
Sure.
We had a great four days there over the weekend for our city, and people that came in to enjoy it. And I just want to thank numerous individuals and groups that were involved, you know, from our city government to nonprofits, just the whole gamut. There was a lot to do for whatever your interests were. I'm sorry I couldn't have made everything, because it all looked great, but it was a great weekend to celebrate not only our nation and Declaration of Independence and its founding, but our city for its 150th anniversary. So everything was well worth the effort that was put into it.
Hearing none. Others from members of council, administration, any comments? General public and media? Hearing none. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, and we'll move to executive session in just a couple minutes.